Call the meeting order, please. Everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Crapp?
Here.
Muntzer?
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Okay. Next, we have an Arbor Day proclamation. I'm assuming we don't have anyone from the Arbor Day Foundation, so we'll just go ahead and read that. Whereas in the middle 1800s, the idea was brought forward to plant trees in an effort to beautify the countryside, and whereas the first Arbor Day celebration was held on April 10th, 1872 through the efforts of J. Sterling Morton, a newspaper publisher, who realized that trees would enrich the soil and maintain its moisture level. And whereas we have joined with other states in recognizing the great value that the planting of trees has on the environment, and whereas trees enhance the beauty of the city of Mount Clemens, cool and refresh our air, serve as buffers against the noise of our busy lives, improve our environment, and provide important educational experiences, and whereas the planting of new trees will be an expression of our commitment to future generations, and whereas the city of Mount Clemens enthusiastically takes part in the Tree City USA program by planting trees that enhance the beauty of our parks and community. Now, therefore, I, Laura Crapp, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in the city of Mount Clemens, and urge all citizens to join with me in recognizing the importance of preserving our environment for ourselves and our prosperity. Signed, Laura Crapp. Do we have any other announcements, acknowledgements, or reports?
We do not.
Okay. We'll move to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Crapp, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Muntzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Okay. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. We will begin with those who are in person. We ask that you give us your full name and your residential address, and we ask that you abide by our three-minute rule. Is there anyone in person who would like to address the commission? Come on up to the microphone.
Good evening. Happy sir, everyone. Patrick Abertuta, 16557 Howard Drive, McComb. Going over the ordinance, I just found a few things that I found, hoping that the commission can take into consideration for discussion today. One is under Section 7, Part 3L, the state of Michigan doesn't require prequalifications. I'm trying to figure out why the city's allowing it or why they're requiring it too. Previously, you're able to submit a whole application at once and then get all approved versus doing a prequalification and then getting approved. VBGG, just for example, on the last ordinance, they didn't have a prequalification. They actually submitted it all at once and they received it. It just makes it a lot easier doing so. And then would any prequalification do if we are going to require it? So, past or present? If an NTC has a medical prequalification and files for adult use license, is that okay? So, there's no definition or clarity on that as well. And if the city is going to require prequalifications, are they going to allow enough time before the application process for applicants to do so? And then why are applicants? There's another section under where the city clerk can deny the application if they don't have a prequalification. So, why are applicants being penalized if they don't have a prequalification? That's a couple of things that I didn't understand. If we're charging such a high amount for our nonrefundable application fee and we're relying on the state to do all the due diligence, why are we doing so? Like, why are we charging $5,000 if the state's doing all the work for us, I guess? So, also, page four, the initial establishment, application, selection process. So, after it expires, what happens then? Is someone able to apply after? What's the process for that? Say, if they buy a purchase of property somewhere and they convert it, are they able to reapply for a license there? On page 28, where it says, "No consumption establishment can be located within 500 feet of a school." If we're requiring 1,000 feet everywhere else, why is consumption only 500? I think that was just probably something that was missed. Also, if an adjacent retail dispensary closes at 9:00 and consumption stays open until 1:00, are retail establishments able to stay open for deliveries only past 9:00? Other than that, on page 30, why can't grows, process, and transports and testing facilities be close to one another like other cities have? Maybe something that we should reconsider, like the distances on those. We get more. I think the city's sort of missing out on applications and revenue there. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Ryan Theory, 62 Rosebud. You know, one of my biggest problems with the ordinance is the boundaries. You know, while the boundaries protect Mount Clemens residences, it definitely puts in harm's way the residences and the people in Clinton Township. You guys use boundaries and use distances to protect schools and parks, yet in Clinton Township, there's a park, there's a residence, but it's okay to put a dispensary or marijuana grow on that side of town. Specifically, we could talk about stalls, okay? It's okay for the Mount Clemens residences, okay, to have boundaries from churches, from schools. Yet Trinity Lutheran Church, St. Louis Catholic Church, a school and a preschool are directly across the street. Guys, this is a question of civil liberties. This is a question of do they have the same rights as people in Mount Clemens do? Okay? As a lifelong member of the NAACP, we are taking a look into this. This is very serious. You guys are imposing your will and your law and your rules against another community, innocent children, innocent families. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Crapp, City Commissioners, George Cale, 19145 Devonshire Street, Beverly Hills, Michigan. And to concur with Ryan, the State Supreme Court certainly issued some rulings in regard to the fact that you cannot legislate, you have to adhere to the state rules and regulations and Michigan compiled laws. Commissioner Campbell, if you could pass this out for me for the commissioners and the mayor. This ordinance is flawed, it's more flawed than the last one. As you may recall, I had sent confidential emails to each and every one of you when the last first reading was introduced in September of last year. This was prior to Commissioner Dempsey coming on board, which again is unfortunate, but Commissioner Dempsey, I do need you in regard to you and I being the missing link to the previous generation, if you will. Not that nobody else here is older than us, but we do speak with wisdom. The ordinance has some due process procedural and substantive issues in regard to the way that it was drafted. Somehow, it has just been tossed around and some of us have been persuaded to believe that this is the best way to go in regard to opting into the Recreational Use, Adult Use Act. The state of Michigan recently, as most of you may know, legalized temp. So, the Michigan Regulatory Agency is gone, it's now cannabis. What is it, Ryan, again? Cannabis Regulatory Agency? Numerous changes, rules, and regulations have occurred. This ordinance is going to be subjected to challenge in the courts, and it could be embarrassing. As you may recall, I had previously asked questions on how Pleasant Trees even got into the mix last year when they showed up at all these meetings arguing for some favoritism or even the outdoor grow they wanted to revisit, come back for a second shot at it. Pleasant Trees was never involved with that initial application. I had asked the administration for an answer to that question, which I never received. Pleasant Trees is now up and running, and some of my business associates on Hamtramck can't get rid of them quickly enough because, of course, these guys play it fast and loose, which is, again, my opinion, but it's also being challenged in Hamtramck. I urge the commissioners to vote against this. I sent an email in regard to bringing in a professional consultant, a cannabis consultant with legal expertise to properly draft a municipal ordinance. Denaskis and Associates could come in here and tell you the flaws of this ordinance. They helped me when I flagged that last one and challenged. Fortunately, I pulled it off of the consent agenda to where we had an open discussion, and we got into this whole charade and dog and pony show on these work sessions, and at the last minute, all of a sudden, there was that point system that was introduced unbeknownst to all of us, which caused this whole thing to go down in smoke. And again, Commissioner Dempsey, unfortunately, you weren't here, but you are a quick study, so I hope you can help out in regard to you arguing that, yeah, maybe we should bring in some professional consultants on the legal side because this ordinance, it's not going to fly, and I'm just trying to save some embarrassment and some hard work. We've come too far over the years to know that we can do a better job. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
I know you wanted it.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Schuler, 24400 Henry B. Joy Boulevard. And my question is a request for me to understand the rationale behind limiting the distance between the marijuana businesses, the 1,500-feet distance between one business and the next. I've been looking through the stuff, and I'm not, frankly, the rationale behind it is not evident to me. So, if you could share with me your rationale behind that need to be there, I'd appreciate it. And I know we're going to discuss this later, so I'm hoping I get covered somewhere that way. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission in person?
Mickey Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I'm actually here because I wanted to openly thank the entire community for rallying behind our event this weekend. It was an amazing event. We had thousands of people, not 100, as the paper said. They came a little late while we were breaking down. But I have, in all the years that I've been here doing special events other than the Bass City Festival, I've never seen an audience this big. But I want to thank the people because we could have never pulled off an event of this size. Normally, you all know I do a lot of things by myself with just a small group of people, but this took a village, and I'm proud to say all of these people made this event a success. I want to first off thank Mike from Pop Sweets and Treats and his family, TBC Mentoring, Tommy, Carl, Katie, and their children, and George Murphy, Epic Entertainment for bringing us out the inflatables, New Anthem Church for the Easter Bunny and taking over 500 photographs at our fountain stage, the Discovery Center had over 3,000 kids go through throughout the day, DreamWorks came out because they're releasing a new movie and they wanted to be part of our event and gave swag to all the children, AAA, the Worship Center, Greater Morning Star Baptist Church. We couldn't have stuffed 20,000 eggs without them letting us use their fellowship hall. We had about 40 people come there and hand-stuffed the eggs for the egg hunt. North Broadway Church of Christ, Zeta Sorority, Max and Ali's, Diane came and helped stuff the eggs, Diane Evanow, she came and stuffed eggs, Steve Saft from the Optimist Club, Jim Ketchum from the Lions Club, Lutheran High North students, Lance Cruz students, Mount Clemens High School football team, track team, our lovely Mayor Laura and her son Miles were there all day, River Acres, and a big, big thank you to Vito from Roolies. Vito made it all possible by bringing us a large semi on Thursday when we loaded the hundreds of bikes, the hundreds of Easter bags, not baskets, they were loaded with toys and games, and let us load that truck, took it to the yard, locked it up, and brought it to us at 8:00 in the morning on Saturday as we had a chain of people emptying this huge semi. But I don't know if you came, I wish you would have because I think you would have felt so proud of our city, and this was every corner of our community was represented at that event. So, I just want to openly thank all of them for the success, and we know next year it'll be bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right. We will move on. Sorry, I'm going to go back to my agenda here. Takes a minute, sorry. Got to load. Of course. There we go. All right. We will, do we have any administrative responses, Mr. Johnson?
We do not.
Okay. So, we will entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
I move to approve the regular City Commission meeting minutes for April 4th, 2022.
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Crapp?
Yes.
Muntzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. General Business 9A Marijuana Business Ordinance First Reading. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Mayor Crapp, I move that we to approve the introduction and first reading of the revised City of Mount Clemens Marijuana Business Ordinance and to second, the second reading and adoption for May 2nd, 2022.
Support.
Okay. Now, Mr. Johnson, sorry about that.
Thank you. At the conclusion of a special work session held on March 21st, the City Commission consensus clearly appeared to favor proceeding with the revised ordinance allowing marijuana businesses to be located in heavy industrial, light industrial, and general commercial zone properties, which are no closer than 1,000 feet to a school, no closer than 200 feet to a park or church, no closer than 150 feet to residentially zoned property, and no closer than 1,500 feet to another marijuana business. We provided the commission with a map, and we put that, that got added today to what's online, that shows the properties that are potentially eligible, and we noted that these are in several different groups, and in most cases, if any one property within that group gets approved for a marijuana business, it will be within 1,500 feet of the others and they will no longer be eligible. During the regular meeting on that same date, the commission let second reading and final approval of the marijuana business ordinance fail for lack of a second. That puts us back at the beginning of the process, so before you tonight, we're back at first reading on the revised ordinance. And Commissioner Voorhees has already made the motion. If there's any questions, I'm going to ask that you address them to the city attorney.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments for the first reading?
I do have a question.
Okay.
And mine is actually one that someone else brought up because I noticed that it was added to, it was not in the previous drafts, the state of Michigan prequalification letter. So, I'd like to know what a prequalification letter is and what, why did we add it now as opposed to not having it previously?
The letter, there's a process by which entities can be pre-approved by the state of Michigan, submit their financial information, all of the, and comply with all of the requirements of the state, and they will then give them what was called a prequalification letter.
Is this something new or?
No. It's been around for quite a while. But now, they, you know, as indicated by one of the speakers, the state doesn't require that that be done, but it's still available. You can still do it.
Why did we add it now? I'm just curious.
Well, because I think it makes it, it makes it, given the way this process will work, as applications are being submitted, it's going to obviously eliminate other locations, and if they're not prequalified, if they don't have a prequalification letter, then we may end up with some applicants who we approved, but they didn't ultimately get their certificate, get the state approval. If you want it out, it can be taken out.
Yeah, I wanted to know what it is. I mean, it hasn't been there up till now.
And I would, would comment just on the, on the comments that were, were made a moment ago. I believe there was one comment as to why the different types of facilities cannot be located at the same location, and I direct them to page seven of the proposed ordinance, 7B, which specifically provides grower, provisioning center, retail establishment, processor, and designated consumption establishment may subject other applicable provisions of the ordinance and rules operated at the same location. And then as to the 500 feet, why was a designated consumption establishment? That's not what that provision provides on page 28I. What it provides is that a designated consumption establishment shall, shall not place any advertisements within 500 feet of a public or private elementary vocation or secondary school. That's what that provision says. It is not inconsistent, but designated consumption establishment still has the same distance requirements as the other ones.
While you're on that topic, so let's, let me make sure I understand the distance requirement. So, if you take stalls, that would be example that was brought up, which kind of surprised me, but you couldn't have one there. It, I don't even know if stalls in Mount Clemens, probably some corner of it or something touches, but.
Part of the building is.
What, it is within X feet of a school, and therefore, it could not, it doesn't say schools in Mount Clemens, it says schools, right?
It says schools. The language says schools.
The language says schools, so it's.
But its impact, as it, as it relates to properties that are not located within the city, I don't know that it has any application. By way of example, would be residential, okay? If there's a residential piece that is in Clinton Township, that has nothing to do with our ordinance. Okay? Now, St. Louis, it all depends where those various, is St. Louis in the city of Mount Clemens?
No.
Okay. And is stalls in the city of Mount Clemens? If only a portion of it is, I don't think it would, would.
It's just this little.
Would qualify.
I don't think so. I mean. There's nothing close to stalls.
I know.
Well, the schools are, yeah. I know, but there's nothing, it's not designated anywhere that we can put anything there.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I don't know, but I, my, I don't believe stalls is in the city of Mount Clemens.
This little tiny parcel is not.
So, I don't see how that's an issue, but at the same time, I don't see how it's an issue, if there's not, so, we can't, our designation, our requirement to be X feet from a school doesn't apply to schools in another township, and I understand this is our ordinance. This is going to get crazy. Because I wouldn't want one there either, you know? I mean, Trinity Lutheran is right there. They have a school, they have, but wouldn't they have to have permission from Clinton Township, who does not have an ordinance that allows?
Number one, I go back to, I don't believe stalls is in the city of Mount Clemens, so it's a moot point.
Okay. But is there, I just, I mean, that just brought, I did that as an example because I had never thought of that before you guys brought up. So, I'm just trying to understand what the problem is, and are we creating a problem? Never thought of it.
Well, I don't know, and it could be, there may be. The only ones I have thought about at all, and this was even back during the medical marijuana ordinance, was that there may be, there may be, oh, there is in fact, probably residential within, closer than what these distances are, in other communities.
Which, but you can't, I mean, you're.
No, but you have that already on growth, but with jars. I don't know, but it seems to me that the residential may be within 200 feet. I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's not in Mount Clemens. You know, we can only control what's in, in the city of Mount Clemens.
I agree, and we're not trying to be irresponsible or cause issues, but we, our ordinance can only apply to Mount Clemens. Okay, so.
Did you have other questions? I'm sorry. Hilarities.
So, can we just walk through how this is going to work when they apply and how it's going to? If someone applies, so we're going to have an initial receipt period as described on page 13. We're going to designate a date. How are we going to determine that date?
Well, I would, I have a suggestion on that date, and that is, that. The second, if this is, if the first reading is approved and it's set for a second reading and adoption, that would be on May 2nd. We then would have 10 days for publication, and the effective date of the ordinance would be approximately May 13th or 14th, when the ordinance would become effective. My suggestion is that the acceptance period would be, would commence on June 15th and end on June 30th. Now, the reason for the 30-day lag is that the clerk needs to develop applications and finalize some of the mechanics of accepting the applications, so those are the dates that I would suggest.
Okay. And those are to be written in under four?
Yes, yes, they would be inserted under, on page 14.
Four A.
Four A, yes.
That's 6:15 to 6:30, correct?
Correct.
So, let me ask you this, does, how long does it take to get a prequalification letter?
I don't know. I've never replied.
Yeah, I mean, that's my only thing. We put us something in here that.
The last time around, I can just tell you, this is not something new or tricky. The last time around under medical, we, they all came with prequalification letters, okay, with their applications. So, I would presume this time around, most of them would have that, but if you don't want the prequalification, it could be eliminated.
I don't know. No, I'm just trying to understand.
That's an issue.
What is it? I'd eliminate it only from the standpoint of the timeframe we're looking at. If you're talking about the 15th and the 30th, that's 15 days, you know, I would just eliminate it. It wasn't in there before, it's not necessary. Why complicate it a little bit more?
Well, if we're not giving 60 to 90 days, then I would say, don't give us another reason to end up in court, right?
Yeah, I just want, I agree. I just wanted to understand it.
Anybody else to need?
Okay. The one other thing, I will say, just say it, and I was.
Denise, it's not you with the tabs this time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, she's, she's learned from.
I know, right?
Oh, no.
She, you do have tabs, so I see.
So, and this was probably an oversight of my, I'll take even, but I don't, I don't see why a grow has to be 1,500 feet from another grow. I think, I agree with the 1,500, I overwhelmingly agree with 1,500 feet for. I think, I agree with the 1,500, I overwhelmingly agree with 1,500 feet for dispensaries and, um, consumption centers, but I don't for grow. And I, I, on record as saying that way back when. So, um, and I, and by separating these, I, I would just make, I, I just, I'm not seeing the reason for it. So I don't know if anyone else has had any thoughts on that, but, um, I see no, no reason to separate grows if they're, as long as they meet all the other requirements between marijuana, one grow, when marijuana grow to another.
I think I'm. I could live with the thousand, but I don't think I want to go to 500.
I guess, one of the most obvious reasons is the odor, et cetera. If you, I presume if you congregate a number of them all together, uh, yeah. Odor is an issue to begin with, with grow, so that would be one of the reasons. But I thought that, you know, I mean, whatever you want to do, if you want to change it, you can change it. But I thought the last time around with the last maps, that, uh, it was pretty much a consensus that that's what we were doing, was 1,500.
No, I totally agree with the 1,500 for, like, as I said, I just thought the grows were not necessarily going to be at 1,500. But if no one else has a problem with it, I.
I mean, I thought that 1,500 was too stringent to begin with, but that was, I mean, my opinion across the board, I thought it was too much, but I was, I think I was the only one, so.
Once again, the only other thing I would hit is that this ordinance, like every ordinance is subject to amendment.
Right. Yep.
I think this is a good point to beginning.
Yep.
See what happens and always revise it. So we've, we've kind of gummed this to death.
Kind of.
You know, I, I think we need to move forward with it.
I just want to say, we've changed to zoning. This is gonna be zoning.
Yep.
And everything we're bringing up, take a look at your map. Your map is extremely limited. So I mean, I'm not sure why we, I mean, I understand some of the questions, but I'm just not sure if it applies anymore since we're not doing it the other way. Since we're doing it by zoning, take, I mean, I look at this and there isn't a whole lot of places that you're gonna be on top of one another. And some of these places aren't gonna be selling at this point in time. If you take a look where the businesses are. So I, I kind of think that, you know, we're gonna beat a dead horse with 15, 500,000, but you know, I mean, I think your map is gonna determine the whole thing. Oh, the map is gonna determine, based, and the criteria in the. And if we get, you know, if someone suggests that we're gonna get sued, we're gonna get sued one way or the other. And we can't shy away from that anymore. You've been doing this three, four years. If we're gonna fear getting sued, then we should basically put something in that Mount Clemens doesn't want it at all. Because you're, you're bound to get sued. Somebody's not gonna be happy. So.
That's very obvious.
Yeah, but that's not gonna solve the issue there because then there'll be a ballot referendum.
Right. I'm just saying, you know, it's, I can't think of.
Um, I have a question. I did, uh, one of the points that Patrick brought up, um, for, for the, um, consumption lounge, when I was reading it, I thought that was kind of strange that we have the, all the dispensaries closing at nine, but then consumptions, consumption lounges can be at, open till one. I thought, well, we have bars, last call, you know, like.
Well, the consumption lounges are open till one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can't purchase anything past nine, then if dispensaries are.
But my understanding of consumption lounges is you could bring it in.
But you can't have anything delivered if the dispensaries are closed. So I, I didn't think, I thought it, can we put in there that if they're adjacent to it or dispens, or delivery only, like Patrick was saying, or something like that, then.
You could add in, I, under.
I mean, because it just doesn't make sense to me if you.
Under the provisioning centers, you could, uh, retail, you could, we could add language that deliveries are allowed.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense that we would have. Yeah.
Page 18, down at the bottom, A.
You mean, add it there?
Well, no, that's where it says no provisioning center and/or retail staff shall be open between the hours of 9:00 and 9:00 AM. I was just pointing out where.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't, that just didn't make much sense to me because I was.
So people can't bring it in though, right?
They can.
Yeah, they can.
They can? So you can bring your own in or you can have it delivered there? Okay.
I don't know that, I, I thought consum, yeah.
I thought you had to have it delivered.
I thought so too. I didn't think you would want you to bring in.
I understand, as you can, they can bring it in.
Okay. Clearly I, clearly I'm not their target market.
Clearly this is a little, so more complicated than, than if they can bring it in, I don't see.
Oh, I just, doesn't, I mean. Is there anyone else with any feedback, questions? We've got some tabs, tabs there, Ms. Menzer.
Yeah, pretty much most of the, the, the questions have been answered. Mr. Murray already answered the one about the, uh, 1,000 feet for the advertisement of a consumption establishment. And you just asked the question about the 9:00 PM versus the 1:00 AM. And, um, I think I'm, I think I'm pretty set.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right, call the roll, please.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes. I feel like I'm, I don't want to think anything. All right.
Move on to bigger and better things.
Do we have nine B pulled?
Yes, we're pulling nine B. We'll bring that back on the next meeting.
Okay, so everyone, we're striking nine B from.
We're striking?
Well, we're, we're tabling nine B.
Well, you're not tabling it, you're pulling it.
Pulling it. We should have done that when we accepted, when we. It doesn't matter. Okay. So we will move on to nine C. Advancing McComb proposal, breaking barriers to play. Is there a motion?
If I could get a turn?
Entertain a motion?
I move Mount Clemens participate in advancing McComb's breaking barriers to play and authorize the city to expend $15,860 of general fund money in addition to $6,890 of CBPG funds approved by the city, which will be paid through the county to financially support this program. The city will also allow the use of its parks and facilities.
Support. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. The March 21st meeting, Diane Banks, Executive Director of Advancing McComb, presented a proposal for collaborative recreation initiative called Breaking Barriers to Play to the City Commission. This calls for a coalition of municipalities, schools, private recreation, nonprofit organizations, churches, coaches, and parents to offer quality recreation programming 40 weeks a year to local youth. Ms. Banks reviewed the proposal and answered Commissioner's questions, but we did not ask the commission to vote on it at that meeting. We are asking the commission to approve the proposal now. Administration recognizes the outstanding contributions Advancing McComb has already made to recreation in Mount Clemens and fully supports their new effort. Mount Clemens is being asked to contribute $15,860 and the use of our perks and recreation facilities to the, this effort. This is in addition to $6,890 of CBPG funds we already allocated to Advancing McComb for this project. We have more than this amount budgeted for recreation in the current budget and proposed in the recommended budget.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments?
Who will be, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dempsey.
Who will be, um, uh, putting a contract together for this?
I would see that we need a contract to the fact that, uh, who is going to be responsible at our end to administer this and work with Advancing McComb. And I think, you know, it talks about facilities, um, I think we need to have something there. What facilities are we talking about? So I do believe that the city should be drafting some sort of a contract that could be signed between the two.
The city attorney would be drafting a contract. Probably after receiving, uh, something from Advancing McComb that's already been used elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm gonna use, draft it for the other municipalities. Um, so.
I would think we should have that.
Yes. Commissioner, uh, Menzer?
So, so I kind of concur here. Number one, it says the city will also allow the use of its parks and facilities. We have talked for three months now about certificates of liability, um, you know, insurance liability for entities that are using our facilities, especially Carnes. We don't have anyone, as you called it, Mr. Johnson, anchor partner that is responsible for the different groups that are in Carnes. I understand that TCB has a certificate of liability, but it does not cover some of the other groups that are using that. We have, we talked about this in February. We talked about it in March. And now we're talking about it again three months later. We need some kind of signed agreement, memo of understanding, or contract over a anchor agency that it will be providing a certificate of insurance for all of these various groups in Carnes. We need that contract to spell out, you know, who is responsible for booking these? Who's responsible for cleaning here? Who's responsible for, you know, lights and electricity? When we have groups in there that are charging entry fees, where is that entry fee money going? So I have, and, and right here in our packet, under, in the consent, under yoga, it says right here, a certificate of liability insurance listing the city as additional insured will be required as a condition of approval. If we're, need a certificate of liability insurance for yoga outside, we certainly should have one for, for activities that are inside a city building. We, we have brought this, I have brought this up and we have talked about this for three months now. And I find it remiss that we don't have an anchor agency. I don't care right now who that anchor agency is. You suggested that there were two, TCB and the library. Get a signed contract that has been reviewed by the city attorney and let's just simply get that done. I don't see that we can approve this tonight because Mr. Murray has not reviewed a contract or a memo of understanding with, um, uh, Advancing McComb. It's in my page four, seventh rule point down, liability insurance, so you named. Yeah, but I'm talking, yeah, thank you. I'm talking about a, 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 as Ms. Commissioner Dempsey mentioned, a, a signed contract. There are some wonderful programs going on in Carnes, but the city is at risk if somebody trips and falls, like I would do during one of the Zumba classes. There are kids that are running and jumping and screaming and chasing each other in basketball. We have a liability if one of those kids, you know, bumps into another or trips another and they fall and hit their face on the, on the wooden floor and break their nose. We, or arm, we have a liability here that we must abate. And the way to do that is to get an anchor agency with a, an umbrella or overall liability, uh, certificate of insurance so that these programs can continue so that more can be attracted. But the city is not at danger of, of lawsuits and the kids aren't, you know, uh, you know, in, in danger either.
We have certificates from TCB, uh, from Advancing McComb, from the library. Any organization that's using it on a regular basis, I believe we've already got a certificate. Some of these others may be working under.
TCB.
TCB's, uh, you know, the actual sponsor.
The knitting and crocheting ladies are actually named under TCB's certificate of liability insurance.
They are not specifically named on their liability insurance, but that's a, that's a TCB program.
Mr. Murray, would an entity like that, like the dancing and like the knitting and crocheting clubs, need their own certificate of liability insurance? Or does TCB's need to specifically name them?
Well, I, I'm not concerned about them. I'm concerned about the city being named as an additional insured. The way that it has been done in the past, that, that I've been involved in with the YMCA, with the library, with other groups, is that there's been a lease agreement with the YMCA, by way of example. We lease them, uh, the ballparks at one time. We had a lease agreement with them. They then, and it was rent free, they in return for the use of the facilities, provided recreational services for the citizens of Mount Clemens. That was a consideration. But what then occurred was whatever the YMCA did thereafter in terms of programming, uh, other, other activities was their responsibility, not the city's. There normally is a hold harmless agreement in the lease that spells that out as well as the insurance requirement. So, uh, by way of example, if TCB was the, at the Carnes Center was the tenant, TCB would provide, provide the city with an insurance policy that was satisfactory to the city, naming the city as an additional insured. And it, uh, it would also have indemnification provisions and would further have, uh, provisions relative to, uh, some of the items that were mentioned, cleaning, utilities, et cetera.
Breaking barriers is not, breaking barriers is a recreational program through the entire city. Where this is not, this is not meant to be a Carnes-specific program. This is a program that Frazier has signed up for. This is a program that Harrison Township is signing up for. This is a program that is through many different communities. It is not meant to just be a Carnes-driven program. And so that's, I don't, I think we're having two separate conversations here. This Breaking Barriers project is not specific to Carnes.
Yeah, I didn't suggest the words.
I know you weren't, but I'm, I'm.
As to, as to.
But the rest of the conversation has been about who's running Carnes, and that's not what this is about.
Okay, as to this provision.
Right.
Okay. This proposal indicates on page three, McComb is seeking to contract with Mount Clemens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which implies a contract, right?
So why didn't we talk about this? Why wasn't this brought to before?
I never saw it before. I mean, the presentation was made a couple of meetings ago, but it was put on the agenda. I saw it when I got the agenda, uh, which was.
Last week?
No, Monday. I got my agenda. But it also, one of the other things that in, in, we have had MOUs with the sport of.
Right. And this list that we would have an MOU, which would come back to this commission, correct, when we send, sign MOUs? So I mean.
Which would cover some of the items, and most of the items that need to be covered are the use of the parks and facilities. You know, that has to be spelled out.
Absolutely. But all of those things in the, can be added to the MOU, which would come back before this commission.
The MOU is a separate.
It's what I'm saying. And so this commission can direct the administration to, to proceed with Breaking Barriers and have an MOU brought forward to this, to this body.
I, I would think that we would want to table this until a contract or MOU. I, I would think that we would want to table this until a contract or MOU or lease agreement is, for the use of our parks and facilities is created by the city attorney, and that we would approve that contract, lease, or signed agreement, and then proceed. I think we're just got, we're just a little bit ahead of ourselves. If there needs to be a contract, the contract should be reviewed by the city attorney. And once the city attorney reviews it, then we approve it.
Does anybody?
So, let me get this straight here. So we are, what we're looking at here is we're saying we want to go along with this program. We want the program in our city, we want to be involved in this. But there's some particulars that we need to work out, which I think was indicated. We have to do a contract, I agree. We should have something in writing. But that can be done, right? And we, we need to work that out, but we, it can be done as, after we say, "Go, do it." The, and I agree on the parks and the facilities that the program will use, the contract should cover the conditions or the requirements of insurance or indemnification or anything else that should be involved in that. So I, maybe we're having an extra step, not necessarily a pre-step.
What you can do is amend the motion to add that you approve the expenditure of the funds subject to an acceptable agreement being, being reached.
Yes. Okay, that's where I was going.
That's fine. I mean, I just think we need, we need to cover ourselves in the city.
I agree. Too many things could happen.
Too many things.
Cannonwood. But I do also think we have to figure out the Carnes situation. I do think it's a separate situation, and I, I, we do need to, for the city, for all of our residents of the city, I mean, we love the programs that are going on there, but we do need to get this sorted out. And I agree, if TCB is going to be the one to run the Carnes Center, then so be it. But let's get that done. Since we haven't anyone else that, as far as I know, that is willing to step up and take on that challenge. Yeah, I don't either, but everyone else, I, we haven't heard of, from anyone else, and we haven't heard, the ones that we have suggested are, have declined. So.
Well, we do have the budget meetings coming up, and I thought that would be a good time to talk about recreation and see if there's a possibility that we have funds to move forward and hire. I think the budget meeting is a good time to discuss that. So, you know, and that's coming up shortly, and I think that might give us a little bit more insight on.
Makes sense. The only thing I can say is, do we have a liability right now?
I have no clue. I don't. That's an up per my.
Expertise.
That goes through the administration.
Everything we do has liability attached to it.
I understand that.
No, you don't mean liability.
But you know what I.
You mean liability insurance, is what you mean.
Yeah, I'm saying, right now, the programs that are operating there, we have a lot of kids, and we have a lot of people that are using the facility under the guidance, I think mostly of TCB. I don't know of anyone, I mean, the library or whatever. They all have their individual MOUs and insurance and, but are we, we the city covered by that?
We, we covered, I understand that from the administration that some of these entities have certificates of insurance that name the city as an additional insured. That would provide us with some insurance coverage, but we still have liability, as things are at this point in time. We would still be sued because we're probably the most collectible entity around. That's why you would normally have a lease agreement, and then you as the landlord would pretty much have no liability.
Right. But if we were running the Carnes Center, the city is, that's pretty much what's happening, right? The city is running the Carnes Center, and we're allowing TCB with their MOU and their, the crochet club and the library and whoever else to do their, their activities there, and they provide us with the documentation we request. And if they don't have it, they shouldn't be in there. Right? So as long, as long as we're doing that, we're, we're doing the most we can right now. There's no, no reason to shut it down, or.
No, I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think anybody suggested that.
I just think, yeah, I agree. We just, I agree with you, and I just think that we need to get it.
Sorted up.
Organized somewhere, what this city is going to do. I mean, just this last, this last event that we are looking at, we don't have anybody here in the city that's going to be able to, like, Frazier has a recreation department. They have a recreation director who's going to.
No, they don't.
Well, they have a recreation department.
No, they don't anymore.
They don't want to that, I mean, it was in there when you were there because the minutes indicated, the recreation department, from their minutes that I read from Frazier.
They have staff, they have city managers doing multiple roles.
Okay, because it said in there, that's why I was saying, they had somebody that's going to, you know, organize it. We don't have anybody. And it's the same with, you know, Carnes. I mean, if we're contracted with TCB, certain programs can come in that they'll be under their umbrella, but however, we as a city aren't running it right now. We don't have anybody, it's not going through anybody here. City manager, excuse me, I mean, you have approved some programs that have not gone through the regular steps with community development, but the city manager has approved it. But, you know, we're kind of like all over the board.
The city manager isn't over there running it.
No, you're not over there running it. But I says you're approving programs and that in the past would go through community.
Would, would go through the application process, just like the yoga thing.
Just like the yoga thing, right. So, you know, I just think.
But I thought, I think we need to talk about it in the budget.
Yeah, I think we need to just.
As long as we're not exposed right now.
I just feel discombobled, if that's a word. I just, you know.
Okay, anybody else?
And I think the budget is a good time.
Everybody good? Okay, so did we, are we need to amend? Do you want to amend your motion then?
Subject to.
Subject to.
Oh, I did it. Yes. So can I just say I want to amend the motion to be subject to a contract between Advancing McComb and, an approved contract between Advancing McComb and the city of Mount Clemens?
Approved by the city attorney.
Approved by the city attorney.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Did you catch that, Nancy?
Got it.
Okay. And we have a support for the.
Support.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda.
Moved approved consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
City managers report?
Thank you. Play Fountain, construction has started on the Play Fountain. Area's been staked out. Water and sewer lines have been brought to the site. Vortax is projecting a completion date weather permitting of May 20th. At that point, our artists will take over and paint a mural on the pad. Advancing McComb is tentatively planning a grand opening ceremony for July 15th. Geese, we're experimenting with a product to deter the geese from Clinton River Park. We've covered the area between the two bridges on both sides of the river. This was applied to the grass now three weeks ago, and it appears to be pretty effective. We are seeing no geese grazing on the grass and very few geese in the park at all. How well it will work when the grass starts growing and mowing resumes remains to be seen.
But we're happy.
At the moment, we're very happy.
They'll be back.
And hopefully they'll stay off the docks when we clean them.
Actually, the docks aren't in bad shape right now. But I have seen geese on the river. I have seen one on a dock. But I haven't seen anyone eating grass.
I will take it. Means they're not pooping.
The Cherry Street Mall musical instruments have been installed, and according to Mickey, she's already heard a concert by real musicians. Although these were primarily intended for children to play with, an actual concert planning, planned by Phil Gilchrist, I'm not sure what the date for that is supposed to be.
May 21st.
May 21st, okay. So, in the meantime, stop by and try them out. We'll probably be looking to put some kind of fill material in other than what's in there right now. But they look good, and I think they'll be a lot of fun. Fire Department has organized a blood drive with the Red Cross. It'll be at the Carnes Community Center from May 9th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. To schedule an appointment, log into redcrossblood.org and use the sponsor code MCF. Or you can just call Ann at the Fire Department, 586-469-6840. And they've already rejected me.
That doesn't.
It wasn't, it's not because we were born in the 50s, is it?
No, it's because I was in Central America and Mexico in the last two weeks.
Okay, as long as there's no age discrimination.
No, I don't think they're doing that. We've been advised by McComb County that the Alter Court Road Paving Project will not be approved because they view it as benefiting a defined number of individual households and would require an income survey of those households to qualify the project. There isn't time to complete such a survey in this year's program. We asked them to expand our second project proposal. They said they will consider that if there are funds left over after their first round. We actually had met with them prior about the Alter Project, and we thought it was going to be approvable. Up and coming events, listed Easter because this was published before Saturday, but the event occurred on Saturday. We do have the Maiden Michigan Show coming up on Friday, May 6th, and Saturday, May 7th. And we have the Natural Health and Wellness Fair, May 14th, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 99 and 115 South Main. COVID stays relatively low, but we're actually seeing a slight uptick if you look at the chart. Hospitalizations seem to be level. Deaths continue to decline. We continue to send people to McComb County Vaccine Central that are looking to get vaccinated, and that includes children as young as age five. Thank you.
Very good. This is the second portion of the meeting. Any questions? Sorry.
Is there any appeal for that Alter Court?
Ryan says no. He's, in fact, he's talked to them a couple times, and he talked to them again late last week.
Especially if we, we did a pre-review with them. It was just, there's nothing we can do?
Does not seem to be. I think our best bid is to try to put the focus on the second project and see if we can get them to do that.
Are we going to lose out on funds? I mean, we are, right? Because if we were allocated so much.
We were hoping to get two projects approved and.
Right. So can we come up with another project?
Not at this time. Unless they have, unless they have money left over after they've gone through their first round.
Commissioner Mensah.
In the quarterly reports, we are missing the housing commission, we are missing the vacant commercial building report, and there is no report from community development yet. You going to add those, or?
Yes.
And when would that be?
That'll probably be done this week.
Okay. And I, I was concerned about the 150,000 that we're going to lose from the Alter Court Water Main Project. There, there's no way we could resubmit that for like sidewalks in the downtown DDA area or something?
They've told us no.
That's a lot of money to lose.
Who is "they"?
I don't remember the name of the, the actual individual, but it's the people at McComb County that are responsible for the actual allocation of monies to the non-entitlement cities.
Will be planning an economic development?
Probably.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the people we normally deal with in planning economic development, it's somebody very specific to this program.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson? Okay, now it's the portion of the meeting that we allow the second opportunity to address the commission. If you would like to address the commission, we ask that you abide by the two-minute rule. Give us your first, sorry, your full name and your residential address. We'll of course ask those in person first and then on Zoom.
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. I feel extremely distraught, disappointed, and disrespected. It's absolute insanity. I would have thought that the city that I live in, that I pay my taxes in, that I volunteer in for every major event in the city of Mount Clemens, that I would at least got to thank you for solving the problem of the Carnes Center. But yet, week after week, month after month, I walk in this room and I am completely disrespected. 200,000, 20,000 Easter eggs we just stuffed this week. We gave away $10,000 worth of bikes and Easter baskets to the kids in the city of Mount Clemens. That's after saving your precious parade back in November. And, and to sit here and think that you would sit here and throw darts. Has anybody asked about the $10,000 investment I made into the new game room for the kids while we're talking about kids running and jumping and skipping? Have you asked your city manager about the $3 million in liability insurance that I provided for the city of Mount Clemens? Have you asked about the $40,000 in investments that my family and my small nonprofit made into the Carnes Center when it was under the jurisdiction of Jermaine Jackson? How about all of that? How about thank you? How about it's a great thing to have you in our city, Tyler? Instead of all of the constant disrespect and not believing in what we do, time and time again, we have come through when the city has called on us. Whether it was the soapbox derby, it was the parade, it was the summer recreation in the park, the project play kits that we gave away to the kids, or any other problem that the city has. If that building was sitting there getting vandalized right now, the city would have nothing to say. But it's not getting vandalized. I have partnered with trusted partners with the city of Mount Clemens, the Anton Art Center, the Mount Clemens Public Library, the River Acres Community Block Club, to provide programming for the citizens of this community. And I'm constantly coming in here getting berated about what I'm not doing. Disrespect.
Is there anyone else?
Don't look at me.
I'm looking at all of you.
Don't be looking at me.
Tommy. Tommy. Don't listen to the one. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Joseph Hattie, 30576 Garfield. Just commenting in regards to distance limitation amongst grows, and the concern was smelling orders. But those are all regulated under your, your general nuisance orders anyways. So if there's multiple locations that have a smell, then you, you have a regulatory measure in effect ready. And, you know, if you grab down other communities that have multiple, excuse me, locations next to each other, it's not really an issue. So just wanted to bring that up, so don't forget about your nuisance ordinance that does regulate that zone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay, we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
All right, over a month ago.
All right, over a month ago, a resident called me regarding some issues regarding a school bus parked in a backyard, a car on the street with plates that expired two years ago, cars in the parking lot with flat tires. In that month, absolutely nothing has changed. I went over there tonight only because the resident called me again to tell me that an eviction took place last week, and everything from the apartment is now out on the front lawn and has been sitting there since last week. So the situation's getting worse and worse. Nothing's changing. How can a car sit on a street for two years with expired plates? How can a car sit in a parking lot with flat tires? How can a bus sit in a backyard on the grass with a turbine and junk all over the place? And now there's furniture out on the lawn. I went over there with the mayor. She went to take pictures, and a pit bull chased out after her. I mean, it's just a situation that is getting worse, and nothing's changing. So, a friend of mine lives in Sterling Heights and was given, everybody's mailed a booklet that talks about code enforcement. And their whole code enforcement is in two paragraphs. It says, "Once a complaint is logged, an inspector goes out. If a violation is found, the person has 10 days to fix it." There's no warning letter, and a second warning letter, and a third, and on and on until 1,000 years pass. If the problem is not corrected, it's sent before a board of residents of the city. If they find that the violation has not been corrected, they give the order, they have 10 more days to fix it. If it's not fixed, the city goes out and fixes it, and it's added to the residents' property taxes. I talked to the code enforcement director in Sterling Heights, and when I told her what was going on here, she couldn't believe that nothing ever gets done. She says, "We do not allow things like that to take place in Sterling Heights." Last year, they issued 10,000 violations. Of the 10,000 violations, only 325 had to come before the board. And of those 325, only 2% of those were added to the taxes. That is because people know that Sterling Heights means business. They have 12 part-time code enforcement officers, one full-time, and then the director. We have code enforcement officers here. We have someone running the show. I don't know what the problem is, why we can't, why can we not implement these two paragraphs in the city of Mount Clemens and get things rolling here? Because residents are upset that nothing ever takes place. If you go out of here tonight, go by Third and Crocker, and you'll see nothing's changed in a month. In Sterling Heights, that would have been taken care of in 20 days. Here it is, 30 days, and nothing's changed. I think that we need to get serious and adopt these two paragraphs and carry through and start taking pride in the city that we live. Another incident I took the mayor to, here's a car sitting. It is so old and it's been sitting there, it's got four flat tires. It's been there for more than 10 years. How can that be? Yet, a resident called me to tell me that they were given a ticket because they had a dead tree in their backyard. I'm thinking, of which they had spent over $2,000 to have the tree cut down. So, that's my comment. We need to get serious about adopting the ordinance from Sterling Heights that's two paragraphs long, and we need to get moving on getting these messes cleaned up in the city of Mount Clemens so people will want to live here and take pride like most of the residents do. But it's just a few bad apples that are creating problems for everyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnes, for going above and beyond for that Kearns and all the excellent programs that you are doing over there. It is truly appreciated on my behalf, and thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Mr. Fournier?
I can't agree with you more, Commissioner Campbell. Spring always brings us out, right? I mean, we start to see things a little differently. And I have complained to the city on behalf of residents and on behalf of myself, quite honestly, about situations that have gone on now for years, and nothing gets done. It is, and then I'll see a neighbor across the street get a citation because a contractor put a sign in the, in the right of way between the sidewalk and the street. But the, the, the personnel that are responsible for giving out that citation can't see the cars in the streets that haven't moved and the flat tires and all the other garbage that is out there that all you've got to do is walk around the blocks. You can't miss it. So I couldn't agree with you more. We talked about having an administrative board. It's been months. We've heard no follow-up, no implementation plans, no, what are we gonna do? Nothing. And I think it's time, and it's pretty much follows those two paragraphs. So I think it's time to kickstart something that we can get things done in this city. Instead of, I mean, you can, I don't want to go into specifics because it's just not fair because it should be applied, all citizens, no matter what, have to comply with the ordinances. It's not a one-off situation. And that's what happens when the person gets the tree citation or the, the signed citation, and a more blatant problem is allowed to sit there for years. And finally, Mr. Barnes, I personally want to say thank you. I, I am still confused by this whole Kearns thing. I appreciate that you have insurance, and I hope we're covered, but I'm still confused by the whole thing. Either we need somebody or we don't, and if we do, we have somebody. So, I, I think that, again, I, we've got to stop talking about it. We have to get it done. So, thank you.
Mr. Dempsey?
I have to go back to marijuana, I'm sorry. But something came up, you know, we talked about that you can bring your own in. And basically, on page 28, it states under "O", "A designated consumption establishment shall not sell or transfer marijuana or marijuana products to patrons directly, and shall not allow patrons to bring their own marijuana or marijuana products to the location." So either if that's not a state law, we probably need to take that out because we're saying they can bring their own in.
Well, if we're amending the ordinance to allow provisioning retail to be open, then...
Yeah, but it says right in here.
Then it'll be delivered to them. I can take it, that's not a problem.
Yeah, but we were saying earlier, if I remember, we were saying they could bring their own in.
That's my understanding under the state.
Okay, so if that's the case, we just probably need to take that out of there if it's not a state requirement or a law.
So you can come to and from a consumption center with marijuana? I mean, because if you don't use it all, do you get to take it home with you?
It's like the bottle of wine they can't... I'm just saying, you know, you can take it home. But I, I don't know if this just contradicts what we were talking about, and I just wanted you to take a look at it.
What page was that?
It's page 28, and it's "O".
I'll pick it up.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees?
First of all, I would like to say that, Michelle, we, they did a great job with the Easter presentation downtown. What I saw on Facebook was tremendous. You drew not hundreds, but thousands. And I will thank Mr. Barnes, because I saw Mr. Barnes, he was, he was doing some narration with, with... Oh, there you are, there you are. So I know that there's a lot of people involved. Again, I, I saw the Rooly's Band, so I'd like to, again, do a shout-out for Vito. I think it was a, I think we did the right choice when we made him the, again, the Treasures Award. But he, he too has the city at heart. As I believe everyone who worked on that has the city at heart. And, and with that, once a Klemite, always a Klemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
So in yesterday's McComb Daily, there was a article about the state opioid settlement, and it said that Mount Clemens is getting $89,833. It also said that it could be used for specific things. Expanding training for our first responders dealing with overdose victims, and treatment for neonatal abstinence syndrome, opioid use prevention service programs, and syringe exchange, or syringe service programs. So, I'm hoping that we're having a conversation with our first responders, Chief Shipman, and, and what training his staff, you know, can use with this money. I, I think it's a, it's a wonderful thing. Some of the communities, like Clinton Township, got 2 million. Warren got 3.9. So, I wish we would have gotten a million bucks, but the 89,000, I'm sure that we can put that to good use. In the, the McComb County Superintendent's and Curriculum Administrators announced their Outstanding Teachers of the Year. And for the Mount Clemens School System, we have Patricia Hill, Charles Sleck, and Danielle Stevens were all honored as Outstanding Teachers of the Year for our school system. Mr. Barnes, it is no disrespect to you to ask for certificates of liability insurance for everybody in that building. It is no disrespect to you to ask for a single entity, or as Mr. Johnson calls it, an anchor partner, to be responsible for the programming of the Kearns, of events in the Kearns Center. It is no disrespect to you to ask for a memo of understanding, a signed contract, or a lease agreement because it is simply protection for the city. And if the city is protected, then the residents are protected too. And I don't see that as a disrespect to TCB because we mentioned TCB as the anchor partner, okay? There is no one here that I heard say that they were unhappy with any of the programming. There's a lot of various and different programming that serves a lot of, a wide variety of our community. What we want, or what I want, is protection for the city through a signed agreement, a signed memo of understanding with one agency or partner or, or anchor partner responsible. That's simply it. We appreciate the efforts that you have put for the events in the city. We appreciate the things that you have done. But there was no disrespect tonight towards you and the events that you, that you were doing. Thank you.
I had the pleasure of participating in the event for the Easter Extravaganza the day of. I unfortunately didn't get to participate in the prep before because I was pretty sick. But I can tell you, because I got daily updates on the amount of work that it took to make that event happen, and it would not have happened without TCB. It would not have happened without Thomas Barnes, who made sure that 20,000 eggs were stuffed with a piece of candy, and made sure that all those bags were assembled and all those toys were collected in the first place, all those bikes, and he secured the donations for all of that. All of those, that, that event didn't happen in those two weeks of prep. That, that event happened in the months and months of preparation beforehand. And that's not the only event that it happens this year that he has his hands in. It's not asking about a liability insurance that's disrespectful. It's all the chatter behind the doors that, that is, is heard. And I think that's the problem, is all of the questioning and then not being upfront about things. And I'm not going to pretend that doesn't happen because it does, and it is disrespectful. And I've supported the entity, and I will continue to support, I will continue to support Tommy and TCB financially and boots on the ground because I believe that an investment in the children of this community is an investment in making sure that there is a community in the future. So, I want to thank, of course, Greater Morning Star for allowing all of that, all of that to happen under their roof, all of the preparation. There's a whole lot of things happening, so that was a disturbance to their, you know, peace and quiet and, and probably a mess to clean up, and we really appreciate that. Michelle Weiss always goes above and beyond for the DDA. The Worship Center, they had volunteers. New Anthem Church had volunteers there. The Zeta Sisters from the sorority were there and were helping. My son, Miles, he was quite the bouncer in the egg corral. And the, and Mike Karpinski, who has some serious megaphone skills for directing the egg hunt. So, you know, and he generously donated a lot of candy to make that happen. So, I want to thank everyone who made sure that event happened and, and was really instrumental. It was, it was a good day to be downtown. There were so many people, and there were so many people seeing Mount Clemens in a positive light. And that's what we need, and that's what we want. And the businesses all reported very, very good days. A lot of them have been telling me that they are seeing sales 70% over what their normal years are. So, I mean, it, what is happening downtown is working for our retail establishments. And there's not a lot of places that can say that their retail establishments, brick and mortar stores, are thriving. So I'm really proud that we can say that about our downtown. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move you adjourn.
Roll call please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.